I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any citizens who have questions? Alright, then we have superintendent reports.
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and start off, I'd like to introduce our high school interim principal and give him an opportunity to come up and introduce himself. Mogi McDonough, he's been on the job for all of about 12 days now, and so we thought we'd start him off with you guys getting to meet him, so go ahead.
Thanks for having me tonight, I'm glad I got here early and was able to get a seat. Anyway, that's usually a pretty good sign of things running pretty well in the district when you don't have a lot of folks coming, but you know, I understand, they're always welcome. So he introduced me as Mogi McDonough, my given name was Matthew McDonough, it's a family nickname, I didn't even know my name was Matthew when I first went to school. The kindergarten teacher was calling off all the kids in the class and when she said Matthew McDonough, I was looking around to see who had my same last name. So, that's how far back it goes, it's a family connection with my grandfather, I'm named after him, so I know it sounds a little bit unusual, and if you can just run with it for me, I would really appreciate it. So it's Mogi, M-O-G-E-Y, if you're not comfortable with it, you can call me Matthew, but you know, I would prefer the Mogi. Yeah, well, I might not know who you're talking about, so yeah, it could very well be. I originally born and raised in St. Paul, Minnesota, I did my undergrad in River Falls, then I went to Altoona, I was a teacher and a coach of cross-country hockey and track for 10 years, I was an assistant principal there for five years, and then the last 15 years I spent as the principal at Cadet, junior, senior high school, I had seven through 12. Lot of experiences, obviously Cadet is a lot smaller than Hudson, but as I mentioned to the people that I've seen and met so far, you know, we had parents, you have parents, we had students, you had students, we had staff, you have staff, there just happens to be a little bit more, and as I was talking to Rob at the beginning of the night here, lot more layers, I was pretty much the Lone Ranger in Cadet, but there are a lot more layers here, a lot more help, a lot more support, so I'm really excited, I'm out of retirement for three years. My wife looked at me like I was a little touched, why are you doing this, but what a phenomenal challenge, what a great district, heard nothing but wonderful things about you, seen, so I'm just excited to be here, looking forward to a wonderful challenge. Thanks.
Alright, thank you. Alright, then you got an administrative retreat update?
Yep, so administrative retreat update, so we had our administrative retreat, let's see, it's been now almost two weeks ago, it was the Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday the first, had a great couple of days, the reason I want to make sure I update you is because we did play human foosball, and we may have had some possible injuries, work-related workers' comps, but no, it's amazing, as we're playing this game, how into it some of these people get, to the point where we had a couple people take some shots off the face, and so, some other things, but it was a lot of fun, well received, and then it led right into our work with Studer the following day, and we had a great day with them, and going through, kind of starting down that path of what is organizational excellence, and how do we work to get there, and creating a workplace culture where people want to be, and what we want to do with those things. It was interesting, as I followed up with several of the folks, not just building principals, but some of the folks in charge of different departments across the district, said it was some of the best leadership PD they've had, and really kind of re-energizing them. And so Studer will be in our district six times throughout the course of the year, and then we do some different remote stuff, and coaching calls, and things like that, but it was very positively received, you know, we're kind of trying to set that groundwork, and really the big piece is, is you know, how do we put into practice, you know, some of these different things, and two of the big things that we talked about on that Wednesday, maybe it was that Thursday, was rounding, and what it is, is you know, doing some rounding with our employees, you know, how many employees a week do we want to try to get to, but basically forming around three questions, you know, what's your biggest challenge facing you right now, you know, who is somebody that is helping you meet your needs, meet your goals in the district, and how can I, as your supervisor, help you meet your challenges? And so, just an opportunity to do these five-minute rounding sessions with different employees in the district, people were really kind of pumped about starting to get that informal feedback and working through that, and the other one was these 30-90-day interviews, and had to do with our new hires, and so HR would be doing the 30-day interviews with a lot of our new hires, and then the principals and department folks would be doing the 90-day interviews, and again, it's just about three or four questions following up with people on how things are going, and trying to get feedback right away with different things in the district. So, like I said, it was very positive, well-received, and we're working with them through a couple of things. The back-to-school events is the second thing on my list, and I think Tim had it up there, couple dates, just want to plant in your head, so we have the, and I think we've already emailed about this, but the new teacher luncheon is coming up, it is on, is it Wednesday?
Wednesday the 21st.
Yeah, Wednesday the 21st, not 20th, 21st.
The 23rd.
Right there. The 23rd is the Hudson Education Association New Teacher Luncheon, so that is, the association does something over at Pizza Hut for them, but the actual, the big new teacher luncheon is on the 21st, it's going to actually be at the high school, the chamber puts it on, they'll cater it in, and it's really a nice event, I think most of you have been to it in the past, and so we invite also, not just our new certified staff, but we also invite those from St. Pat's and Trinity, and depending on if they have new staff, on whether or not they attend, so that date, and then the last date, I want to make sure that you have in your calendars, and just, again, you can RSVP Tim Minor, so we know, is the August 28th, which is a Wednesday, that is our back-to-school, kind of the big pep rally day that we do. Last year, remember, we moved it to the afternoon, it's pretty well-received, so we'll try it again another year in the afternoon, and if you think about, well, the wellness walk starts about 11, and then we have an afternoon full of stuff, one of the things that we're gonna do, we're gonna switch it up, instead of doing a school speaker this year, we are having, we did is take the money that we typically would use to bring in a speaker, and paying the music teachers to work with kids this summer, to kind of put on a rock concert for us, kind of a pep concert, you know, something you see a lot of times when you go to some of these different conventions, even WSB has that, you know, they have different performing groups and stuff like that, so actually, it is Sandy, what's the youngest grade, fifth grade, is that right, fourth, fifth grade, all the way up through some of our stuff that we have going on at the high school, and so that should be, it should be a lot of fun, high energy, get people kind of fired up for the year, so looking forward to that. So that is on Wednesday the 28th, if you put that in your calendar, and again, if you just let Tim know if you can or cannot make it, either way, that way we can know if we need to hold dates, or hold seats and things like that, so. Any questions about back-to-school stuff that we have going on, you can see the open houses and different things that we have going on, and the first day of school is September 3rd for everyone except, I think, K and 4K, everybody else starts on September 3rd, so yeah, so excited to be back, it's gonna be right around the corner, that's it.
Alright. So, lost my agenda. Next up, we'll have the pre-expulsion report, that'd be Erin, right?
That's me. So you've had the report in front of you, Hudson School District has had a pre-expulsion conference process for 25 years, the purpose of these conferences is to address expellable behavior and avoid, when possible, referring students to the board for an expulsion hearing. It's been highlighted by DPI in its case studies of districts who have a process for alternatives to expulsion. So during the pre-expulsion conference, the district works with the student and family to discuss the behavioral incident, its causes, student's educational and discipline record, and when possible, develop a voluntary agreement in which the student and family agree to a number of conditions, and so on the first page of that report is a list of conditions that are often used in an agreement in lieu of expulsion. These conditions in the agreement are really thoughtfully chosen based on each student's kind of attitude and the incident, with the hope of preventing future behavioral incidents and set the student up for success by requiring steps to accessing resources within and outside the district depending on the student's need. So during the 2018-19 school year, 12 pre-expulsion conferences were held, 12 of those resulted in an agreement in lieu of expulsion, this year we had no expulsion hearings resulting in zero expulsions. So as compared to the previous four years, you know, both the middle school and high school continue to increase their utilization of behavioral contracts, these have really helped allow buildings to handle behavioral incidents on-site while maintaining that relationship with students and families, and also limits the amount that students are missing school due to suspensions, we know that often suspensions don't result in behavioral change, and so we want to put those supports in place as quickly as possible. Just in terms of overall data, male students accounted for 86% of pre-expulsion meetings, middle school students accounted for 29%, while the high school represent the rest. Students with disabilities accounted for 21% of pre-expulsion meetings, students with disabilities represent about 13% of our district population, so while there's still a disparity here, this is the lowest number that we've seen in a few years, which is moving in the right direction. Questions about that?
Mr. President, Erin and I had a chat about this topic, so no surprises, but is there any way you could break down or characterize the four meeting characteristics of what people were being bullied about or harassed, is there anything you can say about that?
That was really like a, you know, targeted threat towards a student, it could have been to a staff member, I'd have to pull up those specific ones and get you that information, but I can certainly get that to you. Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Obviously, this is much better for the kids to go through this process, but I would also like to personally thank you, because I think probably for all of us, we dread this the most, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the pre-expulsion? Alright, thank you for your report. Next up is the preliminary budget, Tim?
Alright, so we've got the preliminary budget, the next look at this, and we'll be doing another shot, you'll have another shot to look at this again at the August work session, and then going into the annual meeting in September. So, I'll kind of summarize this rather quickly without going into a lot of detail, there is some movement up and down between several accounts on the revenue side, what it amounted to is we went up just shy of $25,000 in additional revenue, so still at 3.8% increase in total revenues. On the expense side of things, we're a little bit better there, we went down about $50,000 roughly there, so we're at about a 4.7% versus a 4.8% increase in expenditures, so that leaves us about half as bad as we were, or half, the deficit is about half as much as it was, and so it's $77,000 versus $155,000. And then, under the, when we look at the committed and the unassigned fund balance summary, this does not include what you might put in for the long-term capital improvement plan, so that would be under that section with capital projects, so you know, if, under Agenda 5E, if you decide to move forward with that, we'd wind up putting about $550 in there, and that would be under a, and that can be handled, actually that would be handled through the normal budgeting process too, but we'll get to that point in, under Agenda 5E, so.
Any questions on this preliminary budget? This is about the seventh time that we've seen it between work sessions and action items, or action meetings, so, but the biggest change was when they announced, you know, some of the state, the budget finally got done.
Right, yeah, we went, yeah, we went up in the general aid, and the generated projection went up, as well as the per-pupil categorical, so that did help us.
And on the expenditure side, I note, the insurance and judgments, that's really the biggest percentage-wise, it's a 32%, or almost going up a third.
Right, that was, when we're looking at, it's mainly workers' compensation insurance, we had some injuries here that have been more longer-term, which have driven that rate up, so that's the biggest mover there, but actually, we went up across all lines of insurance.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, thanks, Tim. Now we'll move on to transportation update. Andrea?
Okay, so as we're getting into mid-August already, wanted to give you guys a high-level overview of where we're at in terms of transportation, the really exciting news is that the routes are created and students are assigned, so we are significantly farther along than we were last year, but we are, you know, putting several steps in place to make sure that it's a successful start to the school year. So as I said, routes created, students assigned, and it's based on the best information we have available to us at that time, at this time, because I think that's a variable that we can't control, is when parents register or want modifications to the routes, day before school, a couple days before school, we can't plan for that, we just do our best to work with them. Important to know that drivers started driving the routes last week, late last week, and right now Safeway's working with Steve Shonaker, who's working incredibly hard, like almost around the clock at this point, they're working to tweak the routes based on driver feedback, another step that wasn't accomplished last year, so we have put that additional piece into place, and Safeway's also been involved with us in developing the routes from the get-go, so I think it's been a much more collaborative, positive communication flow than previously. From there, we'll finalize the routes and send letters out to families on August 19th, we expect to print and get the letters stuffed on August 19th, there are four parents getting it, depending on the mail, you know, the 20th, 22nd, and based on that, we're staffing up at district to be able to answer the parent phone calls and questions and process them. It's important to note that the deadline for parents to register, sign up for busing, was last Friday, we have sent multiple reminders out regarding this deadline, if parents request after that date, we explain, and have explained in the communication, that they can use the closest stop for now, but that to get a site specific to their student, if they have any modifications to their home address in terms of pickup/drop-off, we'll adjust after school starts, but if we make too many changes after this point, it's a constant moving target, and that's just, that caused some problems, some of the problems that we had last year. So now that the routes are more or less completed, it's all about communication, we're working all these different pieces, we have the staffing up, we have, the letters that are going out are going to explain not only the route information, but also the app information that they're gonna, parents are going to be able to log into anytime they want, and see their children's bus route information, the route number, the pickup location, there's a map that they're able to, when the bus is completing the route, they're able to pull up the map and see where the bus is as well, so there's a lot of different pieces there that are going to be fantastic, and have been very, have been viewed positively as we rolled it out to North Hudson, so that's good. A couple bits of statistics that I think you guys might want to know would be, right now we have 37, or 3,788 students routed, K-12 and parochial schools combined, we have 73 4K students also on a bus, the earliest pickup time is 6:22 a.m. right now, the latest drop-off is 4:49 p.m., and with the elementaries getting out, I believe at 3:53 for the most part, we're within that timeline in terms of the hour limitations, which again, we were not a year ago at this time, so a lot of modifications made, 35 buses at the elementary school routes, 35 big buses for the high school/middle school routes, 10 special ed buses, nine for the high school/middle school, 10 for the elementary, four out-of-district routes, and then, again, I think the great news is at this point in time, drivers have already driven the routes, the drivers are already giving us feedback on the routes, and Steve is working collaboratively with them to tweak them before we have the final push-out in terms of the communication to parents mailing the letters on the 19th.
Any questions on the transportation update?
Mr. President, Andrea, any interesting challenges when it came to dealing with the new boundary changes, especially like River Crest area?
Some, the River Crest dilemma is always the southern part, where the routes are so long and there's relatively few kids, I think the prairie expansion of the boundaries going all the way east hasn't radically shifted the routes, we've just had, are funneling more buses instead of to Rock to Prairie, because that's a lot of that area, but I think the biggest hiccup when it comes to the boundaries was we had the rollover Skyward in mid-July, and making sure all the people that had the, like, fourth and fifth grade boundary exceptions because of the boundaries got rolled, put in the right buildings, and all those pieces were, that their home-school address accurately was reflected in Skyward, so double-checking some of those things.
Mr. President? Rob?
Two years ago, we had a discussion around tracking our students on the bus, we talked about some kind of electronic potential, where is that at?
We did a trial with North Hudson, so they did not only the app, but also the tracking card, or the essential FOPS, and we have them in the buses, it's proven challenging for the buses to utilize the tablets, we needed that to get going to make sure we could roll it out with success, and so I think Steve came here and talked about some of the hiccups associated with the tablets are, like the signal, the Wi-Fi signal, and some of the issues with our routes last year were reflected in the tablet pieces, so if we had rolled it out last year, we would have had a lot of errors keep popping up over and over, because the drivers had to find a way to run the routes, so what, with having, knock on wood, clean routes this year, our plan is to roll it out this fall still, we have the cards, we have the tablets on the buses, and the bus drivers are much more acclimated to using the tablets and not having it be so distracting, because that was hard, and I think we're getting better data, Steve's been working closely with Traversa to give them feedback on what's not working, and that's been a struggle, is you know, that we are the biggest school to implement that part of the program, of their software, and so we're just trying to do it very slowly, but it's ready essentially to go, but we want to start off the school year with having the app to parents, and then part of our communication to parents will mention, this fall we'll be transitioning to the FOPS, we've also wanted to work with the buildings, because we know that there's a lot of kids that hop on a bus here to go to a friend's, or go there, or there's different pieces that aren't necessarily embedded within our system yet, our data might not be totally great, and so we want to keep that conversation going to make sure as much as we can, have best data possible in our system, to then have a successful launch K-12.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Andrea, thank you for all the work this year. With that system you're talking about, that the parents have, will the school, each of the schools have access to that information also, in the office?
I will make sure that they do, that would make, well, the question will be, because we'll have to give you some probably more Traversa-type of access, I'll have to look into that, but I think it'd be really beneficial for you to be able to have that, because I know some of our building principals, you're able to push out like late bus notices to your kids, and to the parents, so yeah, let me look at that.
And is Vine Street supposed to be completed by the start of school?
Yeah, Vine Street should be done, they said probably by the end of next week, so we should be good that way, and one thing I would add that Andrea maybe didn't touch on is, the thing that makes us a little bit further ahead of the game this year than past year is we by default put everybody that was on a bus last year on a bus this year, and only remove kids whose parents said we don't need busing anymore, so like in the registration process, so last year what was happening is we weren't, we were, you know, the weekend right before school started, we were putting like 1,400 kids on buses, trying to get them, because they just weren't on buses yet, and so I think, you know, much for the long, a big, you know, thank you to Andrea and Steve and their teams and Safeway, they've really stepped up, we're kind of knocking on wood, hoping this is going to be a positive start to the year, but there's a lot of moving pieces, as we've talked about, because it's not as simple as taking, picking a kid up from the same address that you drop them off at night, because a lot of times they have two or three or four different stipulations on their transportation, on picking them up at mom's, dropping them off at dad's, picking them up, dropping them off at grandma's on certain days, you know, I mean, there's just a variety of stipulations, it's just not as easy as picking them up at one house and dropping them off, so they're doing a great job, Steve is really stepping up, and so we're looking forward to hopefully a real positive start to the year when it comes to transportation, so.
Any other questions on the transportation?
Mr. President, I'd just like to mention that I was at a city council, thinking about all the construction that's going to be happening on Second Street and Sixth into North Hudson, and I don't think that's going to be happening this year, but for sure next year, so like, yeah, that's going to be a major project where that bridge is shut down, so ambulances, yes, school buses, no, coming across the bridge from what I've heard, so that's going to be fun, so.
Super fun, yep.
And thanks for getting Vine Street open.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, thank you for the update Andrea, and it's good to hear that we're ahead of schedule on that stuff, and we'll look forward to the day after Labor Day. Alright, next up, we have action items, and so I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the language regarding expenditures.
Mr. President?
Rob?
Move to approve the consent items and the chief financial and operations officer, move approval of the consent items in that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,259,971.81.
Second? Alright, that was the second by Bruce, motion by Rob, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved. Next up on the agenda is certified staff handbook, and Andrea has advised us as of the last work session, and I think that there were some suggestions that those get looked at and whatnot, otherwise it was pretty minimal.
Yes, and so I also shared with you at the work session that we're taking a couple things to teacher advisory committee, which we had last week, and they gave us some really good feedback, one of which is on page four of the draft document here, where we've been doing so much testing or teaching of staff about warning them of bad emails, right, don't click, it's like a phishing campaign, yeah, and so they're so nervous about clicking on emails, they asked us to put this list of technology specialists and all the IT people in there, so that they can get quick access to see, is this an email I should open, or is it not, so we said that makes a lot of sense, so let's fix that, and so we did that. Other than a couple tweaks, it's as we discussed last time in terms of the substance of the changes, the committee was very positive about the changes that we'd previously discussed with them before, the one caveat that I want to make is on the, on page 10, the extracurricular and the non-athletic extracurricular activities, this is a piece that we had a significant discussion at TAC about, and ultimately, I would like to asterisk this, and we want to further refine it before we present it to you for approval, probably September or October, so we want to continue to work with these groups and make sure that there's a comprehensive understanding of some of the changes that we're recommending, and so we don't want to be premature in this, and want to be thoughtful about how we communicate, and that we're all on the same page, so at this point in time, we won't be making modifications to this, but you'll see a revision to this proposed to you, again, end of September, early October, is the idea.
So you are looking for a motion to approve the handbook, but that there will be further changes down the road when it comes to the extracurricular activities?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion or questions regarding approval of the certified staff handbook? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes and the certified staff handbook is approved, next up is the support staff handbook.
And with the support staff, it's the same thing in terms of the IT language, as well as the asterisk associated with the non-athletic extracurricular activities, so there's nothing in addition here, that was different than we presented at the work session.
Okay. Again, is there a motion?
Move to approve the support employee handbook for 2019-20.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, any further questions or discussion regarding the certified, the support staff handbook? Any further questions or discussion regarding the certified, the support staff handbook? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion is approved. Next up is the Hudson advisor-coach handbook, which this probably had about as much discussion as the other two handbooks combined at the work session. But are we, where are we at on this one, Andrea?
So the changes made to this from the last time, there were some edits, thank you to Carrie for sending forward hers. And also per, I believe it was Rob's request, to have any place where a policy or procedure was noted to add the specific number of that policy or procedure, so it's identified within the text. Other than that, there are no changes to the document.
Thank you for your work on that, Tracy. Is there questions, or do we have a motion?
Move to approve the athletic handbook.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the athletic handbook is approved. And it's actually Hudson coach-adviser handbook, because it's more than just athletics, but we appreciate the work that's done on that, and I think it's a great idea that it was made formal. So now we've got that approved. We move on to the Fund 41-46 capital improvement funding. And assume, Tim, you'll, we had substantial discussion on this at the last meeting, and I see that we have some subcategories here, so why don't you lead us through that, Tim?
Sure. So I won't go through the 41 and 46, the comparisons, because I think we've been through that a couple times, unless you've got questions on that. The long-term capital improvement plan, that is the plan that you'll approve if you want to move forward with this tonight, that's the plan that you'll approve going forward. But again, that is something that's going to be a document that's going to be updated annually, you know, we'll bring it back here. Because what will happen is things will fall off that list, and things will be reprioritized over time, just as we go through. So again, that one is very flexible, we can change that at any time. The mill rate and tax impact, I just, I updated that one, because what you were indicating is that you wanted to look at that, funding that first year. So by now, we rounded, we wound up rounding that to 550,000, so that's scenario one, and that's a 12.5% mill rate. And then you can see the impacts under scenario one, at those different price points for property values, and those are annual tax impacts. The one thing, before we go too far, is I guess, I probably would, I want to walk through kind of the steps involved in this, and again, from a perspective of how I think you should do it to keep maximum flexibility. So first, you'd approve the long-term capital improvement plan tonight. Next, you'd approve the resolution that's attached, and that's to establish the trust. And if you want to approve a funding amount for the trust, I would recommend that you approve about $1,000 to put in there, just to get it started, and just to get that clock running, there's that five-year wait period. So what you, I think what you probably don't want to do is put too much in there, because you can't get that money out for anything else. You have to wait five years. So if you put that minimal amount in, we get the clock ticking, and then we can start to fund that thing as we go. And the part of that idea behind that is creating that long-term plan, and with the potential maybe to decrease some of our negative tertiary aid. And then the third part is the, so the additional $550,000 levy, we would just work that through so the next budget, as you get to budget approval, we just put that into the budget. So you'll have, you'll have all, so you'll have all three parts of those done. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the order I would recommend doing that in.
So you're recommending doing it in three different motions, then?
Yes, yeah, you can do them three, three different motions, would be good.
All right, Mr. President.
Yes, Rob.
So point of clarification, the mill rates that we're seeing up here would be if we added to our budget.
Right, that's, so that's adding that additional levy of 550.
But nothing to do with Fund 46, that's what we're talking about.
Right, exactly, yep, nothing to do with Fund 46, good clarification, yep. But related to it, related to that long-term capital improvement plan.
So is there any other questions on the report that Tim just gave? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to approve the 10-year plan per building as outlined in the long-term capital improvement plan.
So moved. Second.
And I don't think that we need to identify it further, as Tim said, this is something that, once approved, it's not necessarily set in stone, because things are revised, obviously, projects come up and we would take it, but we have to start somewhere. So we've got, it spans the years 2020 through 2029.
So you just, you know, if you want to put a dollar amount in there, that's that 1,000, so you could do, you could do that tonight, if you want to do that.
That's on a separate, separate motion.
Yeah, you could do, yeah, you could do that under a separate motion.
So right now, the motion on the table is to approve the 10-year capital project.
Yep, that's right.
Is there a motion? All right, okay. All right, so we've got the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the 10-year plan per building, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, that is approved. Next up would be then the resolution.
Yes.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the resolution for the, including an initial amount of $1,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a resolution to authorize long-term capital improvement trust fund, also known as Fund 46, and the motion includes initial funding of $1,000 as recommended by the administration. Is there further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion is approved. And then with, so now on the mill and tax impact, that's actually technically not approved tonight.
Right, that'll be approved when you approve the budget, so we'll just, we'll make that change going forward, so when you see the budget next time, that will be in there, and then you can approve that.
Well, I think what we could, but what we could do tonight is if you could, if you could make a motion and get a second to direct the administration to add the $550,000 to the capital budget.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So that way, it's on record, so we just all of a sudden don't see the budget numbers fluctuate $550,000 at the next, at the next update.
So that's our third motion that we need, all right.
And you can, you can put that, just say, committed fund balance for capital, board committed fund balance for capital projects.
With the mill rate scenario? All right. Do we have a motion to adjust the preliminary budget that we've been viewing since March to include an investment in the long-term capital improvement?
Mr. President, move to approve additional $550,000 to the levy for capital improvement.
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there further discussion? And again, this is just directing the administration to put it in there, because we still have two more meetings, a work session and an action meeting, before it's presented at the annual meeting, that first, second Monday in September.
Right, yep.
Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion is approved, and that direction is made to the administration. So next up on our action items is policy number 425, education of homeless children and youth. This is our second reading. Last action meeting was our first reading.
So again, this is just putting into policy what our practices have been, so this is a policy that we need to have. There have been no edits to this policy since the last time you've seen it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
The second reading. We have a motion and a second for the second reading. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, and the motion passes. Last up on our action items, we have the Part 6 to our personnel policies. This looks like Policies 535 with a bunch of decimals through, what, 548, so.
And this is the, again, second reading, so then we haven't had any modifications since the first reading, and then this will complete the personnel policy series.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, Sue.
All right, the one that dealt with staff, staff and writing publications and so on.
Oh, yes.
537.3.
Yes.
I think it's the one at the very bottom. I was just curious how we, like, do our teaching staff, certified staff, ever like write their own lab books, and then it gets published, and then it's purchased for a class? I'm just curious how that might be handled.
Did you know of that? I mean, is that, I don't know if it's occurred too much. I think we have some teachers pay teacher stuff that goes on, but I think it hasn't been like a published document, per se.
All right.
The last time we had an official question about this, it was a teacher who was producing YouTube videos of lectures that she was creating for her class if they were not present, and a company had caught wind of this and requested access. Turned out, she decided she didn't want to pursue it anyway.
But we did also, on that specific policy, had a conversation with teacher advisory committee as well, to circle back because, and address the whole AP teacher issue, and so that we're open with that, and so we had some good dialogue at TAC about that, too.
Okay. Thank you for your question, Sue, and is there any, thank you again, Andrea, for your work on these policies. I know that it's a long process, multi-year process, that we're changing a lot of these over, and I know that in this particular batch, there's about as many deletions as there are additions, but when you go 28 years on some of these policies without changing them, that's what happens. So is there any other questions regarding this? Hearing none, we've got our motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. I don't know.
All right. I just was presuming that we had done that before.
I'll just make the motion then. I move that we approve Part 6 of the 500 series. Second.
All right, there it is. Sue and Carrie have moved and seconded the second reading of Part 6 of our personnel policies. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Last up on our agenda, we have a motion, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the language on the agenda.
Move the board will consider a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent C, to consider the compensation and performance evaluation of administrative employees.
Okay, we've got our motion, we've got our second. Carrie got in there just before Heather, and it's a roll call vote, so Baumann. Brown. Hanson. Kattas.
Aye.
Logland. Whitaker.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. The motion passes, and we are now moving into closed session.